Hi, I'm Jim Shaw, publisher of the Lexington Times Magazine and chairman of the Board of Lex Media. I want to welcome you and welcome our guest today to another segment of Coffee with the Candidates. I'm pleased and honored to be here with Susie Barry and Joe Pato, both who are seeking reelection to the Select Board here in Lexington. Both are no strangers to the community. They've served on this board for a fairly long period of time. Susie having been elected in the special election in 2014 and Joe running in 2016, and both have been, were reelected subsequently in 2019, I believe it was, and now seeking reelection. They're, I say essentially unopposed because there are two people on the ballot for two seats. And they're, so even though you're, you're running as if you were in a regular election cycle. I know, Susie and Joe, you both have submitted statements to the Lexington Times and you're here today and you're out there sort of talking up the election. So I want to welcome you both. And I would remind people, both Susie and Joe have served at least two years or more as chairman of the Board, so they've had significant experience, not just being on the Board, but leading the Board as well. So with that, let me take a second and ask you to, you know, talk a little bit about why you're seeking another term and how the experience has been for you so far. Let me begin with Susie.
Sure. Thank you, Jim, and good morning. It's great to be here this morning at Lex Media and thank you all for doing this Coffee with the Candidates. Even though Joe and I are running unopposed, it is essential that we continue to have a conversation with the community and let you know our thoughts and hear from you as well. So originally back in 2016, I was approached by a group of people to run for the then Board of Selectmen. And nowhere in my life was this ever on a bucket list or anything like that. But since I've been involved, what I really feel strongly about, and this is a quote that probably resonates with you, Jim, is Tip O'Neill's, you know, "All politics are local." And truly, if you want to have an effect in your community, it starts local. You know, everything that we do here directly impacts all our residents. So I've been on the Board since 2014, reelected in 2016, 2019. I served three years as Chair of the Board. I'm currently Chair of the Care Memorial Library of Trustees. I'm Lexington's representative to the Special Commission for the Celebration of the 250th Anniversary of the American Revolution. That's a state-level appointment. I'm also Lexington's representative to the Hans Comeria Towns Committee of Lexington, Lincoln, Bedford, and Concord. I serve on multiple other boards and committees in town as a member and a liaison. You know, I was fortunate enough to grow up here in Lexington. I went through the schools K through 12. My husband and I have been fortunate enough to raise our two sons here, who are now grown in their twenties, which is hard for me to believe. And they went through the schools K to 12, too. And so for me, it's all about community. It's all about engaging with the community, listening to the community, gathering their feedback, coming to consensus on the difficult issues. And in Lexington, there certainly is no shortage of issues to talk about.
That's, that's true. And no shortage of people to talk about those issues.
That's true.
One of the things I admire about this community. I want to next ask Joe Pato, Joe, welcome. And I want to explain to folks, you know, we, Joe wasn't able to actually be in the studio, so we were able to come up with a process. And again, I want to tip my hat to the folks at Lex Media for finding a solution that I think really works. So from remotely, we welcome Joe Pato, as you can see. And Joe, I want to thank you for taking the time to be with us today. And maybe again, tell folks a little bit about why it is that you're, why you're running for reelection this time.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to Lex Media for hosting this discussion. It really is important to have the public engage with the candidates and incumbents. The fact that we are unopposed, I really appreciate the fact that you're making the time available for us. I am joining this session remotely, so I really appreciate that. In January, I had a member of my family who had to be in the emergency room for a number of days. And I'm very sensitive to being careful with exposing members of the public to potential viruses. So having this remote access makes it convenient. And the fact that I don't have to be speaking to you through a mask. I've been a member of the Board for a long time. I'm the senior member of the Board. I was elected in 2013 and served as a Chair for a couple of years by surprise to me when, when the then Chair moved out of town and, and I became the junior member on the Board who became it. I will say that being Chair of the Board is a great and difficult experience that really makes you understand the issues and try to get the Board to work together to come to constructive solutions. Throughout my time on the Board, my priorities have been and continue to be working for environmental sustainability and climate action and seeing what it is that the town can do to move our community, state and country and, and global community forward on it. I worry about how we develop and execute wise fiscal policy and that we provide public safety and quality public services for all. And while we work together, I also believe that the community needs to work together and that it needs to be inclusive, where all individuals have an opportunity to participate, feel that their contributions are valued and their concerns are addressed thoughtfully. As I said at the beginning, thank you for letting me come remotely. And throughout this campaign, while I am participating in all of the fora that are made available and answering questions for printed materials, I'm also holding remote Zoom sessions. Throughout the year, I hold a weekly meeting, which will continue to hold on the chart next to me. But if that's an inconvenient time for people, I'm happy to arrange more time. If you go to my website, you can see how to contact me to arrange a different meeting. So it's been my honor to serve on the Board and I hope that I will get your viewers' votes to be reelected this year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Joe. And I apologize because when I introduced you, I said 2016. I shorted you by one term and I, my, my research is flawed and I do apologize. Let's just jump right into a whole, I've got a whole sort of litany of issues. And let's jump into the issue of the, the police station. You know, we've been talking about a new police station for some time. We finally got the process going. It's been stalled, it's been moved forward, it's been stalled. And I know at this point now, it's, we're moving towards a special town meeting to sort of finally decide the whole perimeter. And Susie, I'll begin with you. Tell me about where it stands right now and is this thing finally really going to move forward?
Sure. Thank you, Jim. So from the start, I just need to clarify one thing. Many people in the community know that my husband works for the police department. And I do have to recuse on direct issues relating to employment and things like that that would directly relate to him. I do not have to recuse on the police station issue, so I just want to clarify that upfront. So we are planning to bring the police station to a special town meeting on Monday, March 28th, for hopefully an affirmative vote from town meeting. And if we do get that vote, then we'll be going out to the community for a debt exclusion vote later in the spring. The project currently is a little bit under $35 million. The project has been through multiple iterations, including it took about a year, year and a half pause as we had a deeper conversation with the community that actually Joe and Doug LaCenti, another member of the Board, led. So maybe we could ask Joe to speak to that.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you speak to that? Because I know that was one of the things that was really sort of holding up the process for a little bit.
Absolutely. So the need for the police station has been well-known for over 20 years and was the highest municipal priority in the 2013 townwide facilities master planning. So the space was there, or the need for the space, and refresh. But one of the things that happened two years ago was the recognition that there was a lot of concern throughout the country about how policing is conducted. And while we were in the midst of trying to bring forward a new police station, there was a lot of feedback we were getting from the community asking, "Have you designed it properly? Have you thought about what future policing might need to be such that the building is going to lead you to those kinds of new policies and effectively house the people needed?" So we took a pause and the two members of Board, Doug LaCenti and I, arranged for a series of community conversations. Now, the Board had chartered a couple of large public conversations, but we led a series of discussions with over 30 organizations in town as well as about 40 or 50 individuals. We had opened it up to anybody who wanted to contact us. And we had small targeted discussions with representatives of each of these groups. And the intent here was to make sure that people felt very comfortable in speaking to us about their concerns about the police department and about how policing might occur. When, what we found was when we were having the larger conversations, it was a small group of people that were speaking out. We were hearing from the same people over and over again. And there were people who just felt uncomfortable expressing their opinions in public. Some, some is because people were talking about specific incidents that occurred to them or their family members. And we wanted to be able to understand how that would influence what the building would be. And I'm happy to report that the public at large was very supportive of our police department. There were certainly issues because the police department is part, is created through people and all people have challenges and issues. But by and large, there was a lot of support and respect for our police department in the sense that they were integrating with the community well. That said, there also was concern that there should be more support for training, more support for mental health professionals, both for the public and for supporting our public safety employees. The job they have to do is tremendously difficult and they come face-to-face with very challenging situations. And we want to make sure that they are well-supported in how they are able to execute their job. So we took about six months to do this. We provided written and oral reports to the Board. And as a group, we came to the consensus that moving forward with the police station with a revised design was the right thing.
Okay. Joe, let me ask you too. You had mentioned, you know, sort of the stress of being the police, of being a police officer and all that. Is any of that incorporated into, this is really just a sort of a design and build program, but are there going to be long-term effects from those conversations about supporting officers? I mean, we just had a situation unfold in Lexington that I'm sure is going to require, you know, officers, you know, find the time to sort of talk through and deal with it, but the trauma of that situation. Are we working on that as well?
I think the day-to-day job is traumatic, right? First responders at, at suicides, first responders at traffic accidents where there are serious injuries and deaths. That, that takes a huge toll. Now, the, the, there are two elements here. One is continuous improvement in how we do policing, how we provide services to our employees. That will continue. And, and that I don't have anything specific to say about right now because it's, it's not part of the building project. The other part was to say, we want to make sure that when designing the building, there is space to accommodate additional classes of service. So there is space available should the town want to have some mental health professionals resident in the building or other social services professionals resident in the building. The, the floor plan was adjusted a little bit to create additional spaces beyond the detective bureau, the patrolman, et cetera, that were in the initial designs of the building. So that was the concrete change in how it manifested. There are other elements, too, in how space was, was made more welcoming to the public because a key concern was that the, that the public and when we spoke to law enforcement officials, they really wanted to feel that they were members of each other's communities and that there should be no inhibitors in the structure of the building. That would make it less welcoming. The existing building, many people sort of would describe as a foreboding experience walking into it. It's not what I would call a welcoming facility today.
Well, thank you, Joe, for that. Let me, let me talk about, you were talking about the debt exclusion. So once we get past the special town meeting, and I, and I hope that we'll be advancing beyond that issue, beyond that, that event. It seems to me that, I haven't heard of any real opposition going forward. I know, because this has been so well thought out and well discussed. Then we go on to debt exclusion in the spring.
Correct.
And what does that involve, Susie?
So if we come out of special town meeting on March 28th with a positive vote, then shortly thereafter, the Select Board will convene and vote to call a debt exclusion vote. That has to be at least 35 days later. So we're talking, this vote is probably not going to take place until early June. That date hasn't been solidified yet. And then if that receives an affirmative vote from the community, then we'll move forward the project. During that time, the police department will be moving to their temporary space at 173 Bedford Street, which is where we house the temporary fire station when the new, when the fire station was being rebuilt. And then the entire building, the entire police station of 1575 Mass Ave will be torn down and rebuilt in place, slightly adjusted. You know, being sensitive to all the features of the site.
So we're talking about a couple of years down the road before it's all done.
Correct.
I'm going to ask one more related question and then we'll move on. The Hosmer House, it's there, okay? I know the Board has been trying to deal with this. And you've recommended something that I guess then the town manager has moved up and sent it over to the Historic Districts Commission. Correct me if I'm wrong. Why don't I just ask you, where does it stand?
So the Board did issue to request for proposals to see if anyone was interested in basically acquiring the Hosmer House and moving it off the lot somewhere else. Neither of those was successful. So about a month ago, the Board did take a vote. It was unanimous vote to ask to move forward with a demolition of the building. That process needs to go through our Historic Districts Commission and the town manager has started that process.
Okay. Joe, anything to say about that?
Well, just, so we authorized the town manager to request a demolition permit from the Historic District Commission, but we haven't made the decision to actually demolish the building yet. We are hoping that someone will still come around and offer to take the building. Because that's our first preference would be to see the building preserved off-site. But that said, we have started the process so that if nothing becomes available, then we can move forward with the demolition.
Right. And it has to be taken off because it impedes on the process of the police station, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
With the new footprint, it is in the way.
Okay. All right. Talk about going from the fire into the pan, from the pan into the fire. Now we're talking about a new high school. So we've just gotten through, we've, we've built a new fire station. We're in the process of finally moving forward with the new police station, which I think all indication is that it will go forward. And now a new high school. This high school is sort of mishmash, you know, like the old California concept where people walk outside into these little...
We both lived it.
Yeah, we both, we both lived it and walked it. It's, it's essentially outlived its useful life. And so we're obviously in the need to move forward. So where does that project stand? And I know it's, the school committee is taking a hard look at it. But as, as leaders in the community and sort of elected members of the Board that really kind of oversee things that really have happened in Lexington, where does that project stand? And I guess the school, what is it called? The, 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 oh, wait, the, hold on a second, I have it down here. The MSBA. They're, they're going to weigh in too sometime soon about funding that may be available to support this project?
Correct.
Okay, so go ahead. Susie, I'll start with you.
So the town and the school department, school superintendent, school committee, the Select Board, the town manager jointly submitted a statement of interest to have the high school rebuilt. We are on our third one now. And the superintendent of schools indicated in an email to the community about a week and a half ago that she has heard from MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, that at their Board meeting on Wednesday, March 2nd, that we are on the agenda to be considered. We are hopeful for an affirmative vote. If we do get an affirmative vote, that means that MSBA would like to partner with Lexington to either, the official term is renovate or rebuild the Lexington High School. People here renovate and they panic. However, this is part of the very prescribed process that MSBA goes through. It has multiple steps. It takes a while to get through this process. However, the benefit of partnering with MSBA is there's a reimbursement. And so we're looking at a project that's upwards of, you know, the last number we saw, and I don't know how concrete it was, $350 million. It's probably north of that number now.
Yeah, that's what I heard, yeah.
And MSBA most likely, we're hopeful, will contribute somewhere in the 30% of that. That is some serious money.
Right.
Because people in the community will say, if we weren't successful in moving forward with MSBA, has the town considered Plan B and going it alone?
Is there a Plan B?
There is not a Plan B that's been talked about recently.
We're hoping for Plan A.
We are hoping for Plan A. And again, this is a process and this is something where the community has to understand this is going to be a multi-year process and we need to make sure all of our stakeholders are at the table. And to that end, the town manager has convened a working group of people that consists of the town manager, the school superintendent, two representatives from the Select Board, two representatives from the school committee, two representatives from the recreation committee, the conservation director, the DPW director, the director of public facilities, the recreation director, and town council.
Pretty comprehensive.
It's pretty comprehensive because several people have indicated, well, the high schools on one side, we have all this open space next to it that we currently use as field. So couldn't we just flip them? And the issue is not that clear-cut. A huge portion, or not a huge portion, but a significant portion of that land is actually Article 97 land, which has to stay as open space. And in order to build on Article 97 land, you have to get an affirmative vote of your town meeting and the state legislature. And then it's like a one-for-one swap. So if we take, you know, four acres out of Article 97 at the center fields, we have to put four acres somewhere in town, it doesn't have to be on the same property, into Article 97. So this is where you need to have all your stakeholders at the table. I've publicly said, this is not an us versus them. This is a very, 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 very large round table with everybody having the conversation. And we need to do this in a transparent manner. This is going to be the largest single municipal building project this town has seen. And we're all going to have to come together to make it happen.
Joe, what do you have to say about all this? This is, it's obviously a huge undertaking. And as Susie pointed out, there are a lot of people, a lot of players. And, but I also believe, I personally believe it's something that we really have to look hard at, you know, in terms of, you know, moving forward. Joe?
Absolutely. And the process that Susie outlined was something that was called for by the School Master Planning Committee, which I serve on and continue to serve on, where taking a look at the entire complex and understanding where can a building be constructed and how do all those services work and continue to work into the future. Complicated, of course, by the fact that some of the land has D restrictions on it. But looking forward, I'm very hopeful. This process that Susie described is something that we're doing prior to the MSBA design process. Because we have to be able to tell the MSBA, here is where you, we can look at a building. If it's new. Of course, the renovation, should it be renovation? It would be in the existing spot, possibly with additions, et cetera. But if it's brand-new, it could be in the existing footprint or it could be somewhere else in the area. And I'm, I'm very hopeful as we move forward.
Well, thank you. We've been, we spent a lot of time on those two particular issues. So we'll move more quickly through the next few issues. You know, the Lexington streetscape is something that's been going on. And I think it's been, for the most part, going relatively smoothly. I've seen the changes, you know, and I think that they've made some pretty good quick work of some of these different parts. And I know it's like they're building, they're working in one area one day or two days and then shifting, so they're kind of spreading the burden a little bit. And it seems to be working. But there's a second part of that coming up. You know, I think the first part speaks for itself. I mean, we've been debating it and talking about it for a long time. We've finally seen some movement. I am a little concerned of one thing, that's the crosswalk in front of the post office. It seems to be ill-defined, that it's like you can't see the stripes on the road. And so anyway, so there's my, that's the only thing I have, you know, in terms of any criticism of the project, because I think it's really going well. But there's a second part, the Battle Green Streetscape. And Susie, I know that you, you said something about having to be recused from a vote on that?
I do, because I work at Hancock Church, which is a direct abutter to the, to the area, which is going to be under consideration. And as Select Board members, we are considered the road commissioners in town. And this is a road project. So while there's not a direct financial benefit to me in consultation with town council, there is an appearance that there could be a conflict, so I'll be recused on this. So I'll ask you to chat with Joe.
So Joe, on this, regarding the Battle Green Streetscape aspect of this project, what does that entail? Because, you know, I know the other one goes up, up to about the statue, the original one. Yeah, Miriam Street. And now this picks up from there. So I don't know if this is phase two or an add-on, but what is that all about, Joe?
So there are adjacent projects. And the, this will be the section going from Miriam Street to Harrington and down to Mass Ave. Mass Ave and Harrington, so essentially the triangle around the Battle Green. The, excuse me. There are some very interesting suggestions that we are considering. As you know, the corner of Harrington and Bedford Street is one of the accident hotspots in Massachusetts, certainly in Lexington. But in Massachusetts, it's often on the top 200 list. And a proposal that has come to the Board to consider is to have a roundabout. There were about, over a dozen proposals that have come to the Board over the past 10 years, and none of them worked particularly well. And the old roundabout ideas took a little bit of land from the Battle Green. This one does not, there have been improvements in design requirements for roundabouts. And this one does not carve into the Battle Green at all. In addition, there are proposed changes in the triangle from the library, where the statue is, to make the crosswalks there actually go through a now-permanent triangle. Because the reality is, many people try to step into the street to get a better picture of the, of the statue and the, and the green. So this will be a much safer design. All of that is still in process. It's going to be coming back to the Board in the next couple of weeks for a vote.
Okay. So, Joe, let me ask you, if people are interested in having their opinion known, they, they still have time to do that?
Absolutely. There was a public hearing that we held two or, two weeks ago or so. And we are still taking comment. And then we'll take comment until we take a vote.
Great. Well, thank you. The town of Lexington has nearly $10 million in money from the American Rescue Plan Act. What are, what are some of the things that you're looking at? This is a significant amount of money. I know I saw somewhere that there was a small grant program for small businesses. What are some of the other ways that you're spending this, what they call ARPA money?
Sure. And so the town manager and town staff brought to us a list of projects to consider. And the Board, excuse me, prioritized some of those. And we also made it very clear that the Board is interested in using ARPA funding for economic recovery, public health, affordable housing, and human services. And to that end, we have allocated close to $2 million of the money. A good portion of it is going to small grants for local businesses that were directly impacted by COVID in a negative manner. We have also put aside some money to hire an additional mental health clinician for our human services department, because we're hearing so much about how people are struggling with mental health through COVID. We have also put some money into public health in terms of, the town has bought rapid test kits, they've bought some masks. The town is also offering PCR testing on Saturdays.
Oh, I see that every, every Saturday so far, yes.
Yes. And it was very popular when it first started and its popularity is starting to wane now. We are committed to doing that for the next several weeks. So that's on Saturdays, it takes place at the School Administration Building on Maple Street.
If people are interested in the masks and the, the at-home tests, how do they go about finding them?
They would need to get in touch with the Health Department.
The Health Department.
Yeah, I'm not sure the masks have come in yet. I think the tests have. And then we've done some other things related to affordable housing in terms of setting aside some money for Lexab to be able to let them execute faster on purchasing properties and things like that.
Right. Well, that's good. And I know there, we just printed a thing about Lexab in the Lexington Times. And I know that their mission is getting more challenging as the price of housing in Lexington rises.
Correct.
So, so quickly. And it's happened so quickly. So Joe, what are your thoughts? I mean, pretty much the same thing. This is pretty much a done deal because the Board has voted on it. And, but there's still plenty of money. If people are, you know, may have an idea or a suggestion or whatever, they can still bring those ideas forward? an idea or a suggestion or whatever, they can still bring those ideas forward?
So one of the things that we're going to be doing is a participatory budgeting process, where we're going to invite proposals from the public and have the public weigh in on prioritization. That has not begun yet, we're still working out, the detail staff is developing an execution plan for it based on the way participatory budgeting works in a number of communities in Massachusetts and elsewhere in the country. The, so the total budget is just around ten million dollars over three, it has to be spent over three years, so this is, this first round of grants and allocation is only the beginning, we will be doing this for a while.
Okay, so, well, thank you. We touched base a little bit on Lexab. One of the issues that I think has become incredibly important in Lexington is the issue of affordability in housing. I know Lexington has always been committed to providing a certain level of affordable housing, we've always met the threshold that the state requires, you know, that ten percent threshold, or that they, I don't know if they require, maybe they require it, but they certainly encourage it, and I know there's a lot tied to that, reaching that ten percent threshold, particularly on forty B projects and other things. So with that, you know, I know you just talked about some of the money helping to facilitate Lexab, I know Lexington Housing Authority, which primarily deals with sort of senior housing, but they do deal with low on moderate income housing too, I believe, to some degree. But I also want, if I can get you to touch on the issue of affordable homeownership, you know, the possibility of multi, two-family units coming back to Lexington, they were here, we have two-family units, you know, and some communities have, and they look really beautiful, I was in Bedford, and there's some beautiful two-family homes in Bedford that were essentially brand new. But affordable homeownership, where somebody can actually feel like they're putting roots into the community and not feeling transient, because how, you know, the nature of being, renting versus owning, you know, you always feel like the, you know, there's that possibility that you're moving on and going somewhere else. So your thoughts on that? Muzzy, Muzzy condominium is an example, and I know we haven't done something like that in a lot of years, but I know people who are living in town, people that you know, who got their, who bought their first home, if you will, home, at Muzzy, was able, were able to sort of put their roots down and then move on, so anyway, so talk about that.
Sure, so affordable and attainable homeownership is something that Joe and I have heard about in every forum we've done this campaign season, and it's because right now, the average price of a single-family home in Lexington is north of a million dollars.
Right.
Which is not affordable or attainable for many people. That being said, Lexab is, you know, one vehicle for people, Lexab has also started their program for town of Lexington employees, where they could move into town into one of their facilities at a reduced rate, be able to save some money and potentially go on to purchase property. We have recently, excuse me, set up the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, which is studying other issues in town, we may actually form an affordable housing trust here in Lexington. I serve as liaison to the Council on Aging, and housing is definitely forefront in their mind in terms of, it's kind of the other end of the spectrum, you're talking about people purchasing, they're talking about people being able to stay in their homes and how to downsize and find, same thing, how to downsize and find something. If you were to sell your home, would you be able to go and purchase something, you know, smaller with what you were able to get for your home? And that's truly a challenge. We do have to look at our zoning coming up in terms of, we are an MBTA community, we are served by the bus line, and so we do need to make some changes to our zoning bylaws by the end of 2023, that would increase multifamily housing and things like that.
And that's something that's just come out of the state government, I know Mike Caneely.
Mike Caneely worked on that, yes.
Right, and he's the Secretary of Economic Housing and Economic Development, happens to be elected and resident, and I know that he's been way out in front on that, but as an MBTA community, we have to, so we have to adhere to these new standards. What happens if we don't? What is the consequence for not adhering to it? Is there a consequence?
There are, I'm not up to speed, we haven't been fully briefed on what they are yet, because this is kind of evolving rather quickly, because the housing crisis is so significant in greater Boston area. You know, I will say, coming to this town meeting, we also have an article for four-seventy-five Bedford Street, the former Boston Sports Club, where they're proposing a biopharma building, and a lot of the residents up there, you know, are not in favor of the biopharma building, we're hearing from the community, can't we put housing there?
Right.
You know, so it's a very active conversation that's going on.
Okay, Joe, weigh in.
So a couple of things, one, penalties to us as an MBTA community would be, we would lose access to certain funding programs. Those are significant, so it's not a, it pretty much does force communities to do something about creating opportunities for denser housing. The, this is a complicated issue and one that we've heard a lot about from the community. Suzie mentioned a lot of the issues, part of that is also the ability for there to be preservation of diversity of housing. It's not just affordable housing, it is housing at a variety of price points, so that the community remains diverse socio-economically. And I think that there are some creative thoughts on the table at town meeting, there will be a, a citizens' article for zoning, which is primarily focused on sustainability and providing incentives for building more sustainably, but it does that by reducing the GFA allowed, that's the gross floor area allowed for new construction, by cutting it in half if you don't implement any of the sustainability targets. One of the effects of that is, it would make for preservation of smaller homes, or the replacement of large homes with smaller homes, should a builder not want to implement any of the sustainability features. And I think that is another vector into how might we, as a community, create zoning that makes it more likely that construction addresses multiple elements of the market, rather than just huge homes that are at the maximum size of that the zoning allows.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. We've gone a little bit over, but I want to continue, I think we can get through the next couple of things relatively quickly. I think we've had a pretty good conversation, and I actually want to try to keep it going. You were involved, Suzie, in a project involving town committees, I know you've sort of been leading this effort to sort of reexamine the role of committees in government in Lexington, how they're appointed, making the longevity of members of some of those committees, and it's been said that some of them have been, you know, positions have been held for people by, you know, for a very long time. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, by the way, I mean, if they're volunteering and willing to give their time in doing, you know, as long as it's not a self-serving thing. Talk a little bit about what that entails, because I know Lexington, I know most communities have, they have the involvement of committees, I remember when the new town manager, I call him the new town manager, he's not the new town manager anymore.
He's gone on four years.
When Jim Loy arrived, we had a lunch, and he was talking about the committees and the community he had come from, I think he said they had about six or seven committees. And here in Lexington, we have a few more than six or seven.
We do, we do, I mean, Lexington is very blessed by the number of hours of volunteer work we get through our boards and committees. That being said, we have north of fifty, sixty, seventy, the number varies, depending who you talk to and how you count them. And so dealing with boards and committees has been a board priority for years, but it's also kind of been our hot potato, because it's been very hard to kind of get our arms around and how do we want to approach it. So this passed, in the past, this fall, actually, we surveyed all our board and committee members, so we surveyed close to three hundred and fifty people, and we had a forty-two percent response rate, which was significant, and we asked them questions from, you know, it's easy, you know, how many boards and committees do you serve on? The majority of people only serve on one, but we did have people that served on three, four, or north of five, in length of years that you've been on a committee. And you probably won't guess how long, but actually, the sweet spot was five to seven years.
That's the sweet spot.
That's where the majority of the people are right now.
Right, which is reasonable.
Followed up by people who had done more than twenty years, and people who've been on less than a year. And I think where we've been very, where we benefited from getting, bringing more people to the table is through Citizens Academy, which is a program that the town manager's office, town manager's office runs once a year.
It's been extraordinarily successful.
Great thing, but this, this survey asked a lot of questions, it asked some tough questions, like, how do you feel about term limits for committee members? How do you feel about term limits for chairs of committee? Should you automatically, you know, when it comes up for the reappointment process, should you automatically be reappointed, or should you have to go through the whole process all over again? We're evaluating how we reach out to the community to make them aware of these different boards and committees, and we're also looking at the individual committees and their charges and the work that they're charged to do, and so that's the part that's kind of taking a little bit longer, and seeing if we can combine any boards and committees, or if there are actually some that we can dissolve.
Right.
And we've done that, we've dissolved a few, dissolved a few, I mean, so it's definitely a work in progress.
Well, and some of these committees have significant authority.
They do.
You know, it's, like, for instance, the, you know, the Board of Health, and, you know, their involvement in mask mandates and other things, I mean, it's, some of that, some of the stuff supersedes other authoritative bodies that you wouldn't think they would.
Right.
So.
And we're also making a true effort to make the boards and committees representative of, you know, our demographics in town.
Right.
And that's a challenge as well.
And I, but I think we've been achieving, I think we've been moving in the right direction.
We're definitely moving in the right direction, we definitely have more work to do and we know that, so it's an ongoing conversation.
Right, and so Joe, I mean, I know you guys, as members of the board, you're also liaisons to several of these committees, and I know you split it up, and I know, Joe, that you're liaison to the, one of them is the Communications Advisory Committee, which basically is the committee that we work with here at Lex Media. So, and you both have been good friends to Lex Media, so let me publicly thank you for that. But the, so in terms of the involvement in where the committee structure stands, are you on board, and have you seen some of the results of what Suzie's talking about?
Ongoing process, we, Suzie has shared with the board results of the survey, our aspects of the results of the survey, and there's been a working session where we've begun to look at issues. But that's, this is going to take a while, it's something we've been discussing for a long time, but I think we're making some concrete movements going forward. And as Suzie's said, blessed with a lot of individuals who are volunteering and giving us resources the town could never afford to purchase through consultants and the like, so it's, it's a, we're very thankful for citizen participation, and we're also looking at how we can make it more rewarding for those who participate in our committees.
And I just, I would just add, before we go to the next and final issue, you know, the more people in the community who participate, it creates more transparency too.
It does.
And I think, I think Lexington is really, you know, things have changed significantly over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years in terms of transparency in government, and, you know, I will again pat Lex Media on the back, because we broadcast every substantial public meeting.
You did, you did an amazing job, so.
Well, thank you, and as a result, people are more informed, and, you know, they know when it's time to chime, you know, chime in and get involved, so, and we're pleased to sort of play that role. Lexington is about to celebrate two hundred and fiftieth, I remember the bicentennial, I stood there at the age of thirteen and watched President Ford lay a wreath at our Minuteman statue, it was a significant event in history, and two hundred and fifty years is now here, I can't believe that it's been fifty years since I stood there and watched the president come, I'm sure you were there too.
So I was there, I was young, I was nine, and I missed shaking President Ford's hand by that much, the crowds were so deep, I mean, they were like six or ten, and reaching and missed it, but it was an extraordinary event, I was on a float, I was on a Girl Scout float, I will put it out in the public here, apparently I was dressed as a cow on the float, I don't remember it, but my mom keeps telling me, remember you were the cow on the float.
Thanks, Mom.
Yeah, so there you go, Mom, I let the world know. So yes, so the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of Lexington is coming in three short years, and it will be here before we know it, so April of 2025, and the town has already embarked on starting to plan, because that's what we do in this town, we plan, and we plan well.
And we have a committee?
We do, we do, so the Select Board formed the Semi-Quincentennial Commission, otherwise known as Lexington Two-Fifty, or Lex Two-Fifty, which is a lot easier to say.
Right.
It's composed of eleven different members representing all different aspects of our community, and we're looking at planning core events around Patriots Day weekend in 2025, but events that are going to last, are going to start, you know, six to nine months before and go six to nine months after. And these are going to be events that are going to be open to everyone in our community, all ages, all abilities, all, we're going to invite all our cultural groups to the table, and so stay tuned, because we're also working with Lex Media on an upcoming video. Right now, we're in the midst of a logo contest, where we're looking for residents or people who attend high school in Lexington, you don't have to be a resident, just if you attend one of the other schools in Lexington at the high school age, to take part in our logo contest. And there is a prize stipend for that of a thousand dollars for first place, and there's a second and third place as well, and we'll be revealing that logo hopefully right before Patriots Day this year.
But there's a deadline for submission too, right?
There is, and that is March second.
March second, so it's coming right up.
It is, it is, and we're very excited for that. And so we have a lot of interesting things that we're looking at doing, and it's a really exciting time.
Right, it'll be an exciting time now, so that's three years from now, right?
Correct.
So assuming you guys, well, you will win your reelection now, and then hopefully run again then, and I'm sure, you know, I look forward to actually having both of you run again, because I've come to know you both so well. Suzie and I, we work together on the celebrations committee, so I know this celebration is of significant importance, because you spent a lot of years as chair of the Town Celebrations Committee. And Joe, you're obviously looking forward to this event, I know you're front and center in just about everything that takes place in Lexington, so tell us about how you're looking forward to this.
Well, first, I want to express my personal, and I think I can speak for the board's, appreciation to Suzie for taking the role of being our representative on this committee, because I think she, of course, will do an outstanding job on supering this forward. So it's, Jim, thank you for suggesting to run again, I'll file that away, that this will be twelve years, should get reelected next week, not next week, in two weeks. And we'll think about it in three years, whether or not it still makes sense to run. I will say that I think the record in recent history is fifteen years on the board consecutively, so I'll have to decide whether or not I want to go for that.
Okay, well, we hope you'll consider it, so let's say that. I'm going to close out, but I was teased with the idea that there may be an extraordinary event that somebody has in mind or would like to propose, so I'm going to just throw it out to you, Suzie, about, you know, what this possibly could be, you know, because I know my curiosity has completely peaked.
Okay, so Jim and I were having a conversation about what to talk about today, and I said he could always ask me, like, what is the one event that I think would be amazing to have happen in Lexington, so you ready? Okay, Cary Memorial Hall, ready? One piano on the stage, ready? Elton John.
Okay.
Yeah?
Pete Lally?
Pete Lally and I had this conversation three or four years ago, but I think it'd be really, I've always, I grew up listening to Elton John, I shared a bedroom with my two older sisters, my oldest sister played Elton John records all the time, I think it'd be amazing, I think Spectacle does such a great job.
Spectacle does a fantastic job, and they started in Lexington, they're in so many communities now, I just went to a program of theirs up in Lowell, they're, you know, they're up at the, they have the newly renovated Colonial Theater in Laconia, New Hampshire, they've got the exclusive contract for the new facility that's being built currently in Nashville, New Hampshire, they're down in Plymouth, they're everywhere, and it all started for them here at Cary Hall in Lexington, and Pete Lally has been, you know, he's been involved in a lot of things here in Lexington, he's not just a transient guy, he rolls his sleeves up, and he loves a challenge.
Well, so I'm going to put the challenge out to Pete Lally, and I'll put the challenge out to Elton John himself, I don't know if he has people around here, but I understand he's good friends with Bob Kraft, so Elton John, if you would like to come to Lexington to perform on the Cary Memorial Hall stage, we would love to have you. If you want to come in April around Patriots Day, we can show you a really interesting time too.
I think that we can, I think we can bring that to his attention, we'll work, we'll work to do that. I want to thank the two of you for being with us today, and, you know, I think this worked out pretty well, I wasn't sure how the format would work, but Joe, I appreciate you taking the time, Suzie, I appreciate you taking the time, I wish you guys all the best, I mean, I know, you know, no matter what, you guys will be returning to the Select Board, and I think Lexington is certainly very, very fortunate to have the two of you, because you represent, you know, the two, I know you represent the whole community, but you do represent certain constituencies, and you work so well together, and that's the one thing I really appreciate about this board, is that you don't always agree on everything, but at the end of the day, you really make an effort to work with one another and move forward for the good of the community. and move forward for the good of the community.